Family's here. Nick, you must sign in.
I appreciate that.
Hey, six o'clock, I will call the public hearing. Do we have an agenda? Do we need a formal approval for this? I move to the wonderful minutes for the hearing. Second. All those in favor.
Hi.
I. Posed. There are nine carries. Christina.
Well, the description of the project for the public hearing stated in the notice. Um, the public hearing is to hear public comment for a conditional use permit application. Um, for physical address eighty summit avenue west. Um, the description is in your packet. Uh, Nick is here to answer questions and describe the reason for the request of the permit. And I'm just gonna. Put it all on you.
Alright.
Everybody's seen your application next. So if you just want to summarize it, then if they have any questions, it's pretty informal.
Um, ultimately, so zone commercially right now. Um, my understanding used to be apartment buildings, there's an apartment building on top, I believe. Trying to renovate it back into an apartment on top and keep it commercial on bottom. It's currently chiropractic office below. Um, we're trying to keep it as a chiropractic office below and make a just renovate it into a living space for my son and I on the top level. So very, very simple. I don't plan on renting it out to anybody else. I just plan on keeping it as a residence for myself.
It's my understanding of the previous ownership that had been mixed use, but it never had been permitted.
I believe you're correct.
And that was, you know, over a decade ago anyway. So proper, proper process, like permitting is nice.
We can do it the right way.
Correct. Right.
Well, I don't have any. Well, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good idea. I think it keeps everything.
Is the lower level still divided into two separate suites or is it, is the chiropractor suite expanded so there's just one?
The chiropractic suite takes up the entire level.
Oh, it does.
Um, so it's the, the office, then the waiting room, and then different, uh, two different treatment rooms.
Okay. Originally, I know that there was a chiropractor and a veterinarian.
Okay. Yeah. So the lower level, other than, uh, one office on the very east end of buildings that is my office for work. Um, the, the entire level is chiropractic office.
And is there any, do you have any plans to build any additional structures like a garage or carport or anything?
I kicked around the idea of building a garage on the adjacent lot to it. I'm not, I haven't decided. Fully on that yet, but I think it would be less of an eyesore than just having vehicles parked there. So, um. And it's at that point, I think it'd be coming back for the city to, to see if that's an option or not, but, um, I don't have any immediate plans to build anything.
Have you had any comments from your adjoining property owner about whether it's a good idea or not?
You, you, you're the property owner, Nick.
Um, I. No, not at all.
It's, it's me by the way.
Okay. I, after, after her comment, I figured that.
So I, I just, I think the whole process is a little abusive because that house was built as a private residence.
Okay.
And for decades, it was occupied. It's a one-story ranch home. In a different location than it is now.
Really?
It was. Uh, previously located kind of where Timberline, uh, convenience store is.
Oh, okay.
There. And the property it was on was taken by eminent domain to build US seventy-one through there. US seventy-one used to be ten feet behind me.
Okay. Wow.
So it was taken by eminent domain and the building was sold for peanuts, I guess, to a local businessman. I believe it was Bill Ballsinger that built, uh. And he moved it to where it is now.
Okay.
But it was just a one-story house on the basement and he put it up on this kind of an unnaturally high basement to kind of force a split level out of it.
Okay.
And I remember at the time it was a treated wood basement. It's not concrete walls.
Yeah, I don't believe it's concrete.
They were like green prefab panels.
Okay.
And I remember my dad said, that'll look, that'll look nice.
Yeah.
But this was in the late seventies when they built, uh, US seventy-one. So there was a very, uh. Low quality house there before, from, since early nineteen hundreds, they demolished that and leave that house in there.
Okay.
Is the off-street parking, you're gonna be using that then?
Yes.
On this side of, yeah.
Any of my parking will be in the, uh, in that, uh. Parking lot or that adjacent lot right to the, to the east side of the building.
I, I think you were being pretty friendly with letting other folks park over there too, so.
We're, I'm gonna be having conversations with them come winter about, and maybe hopefully help with some snow removal if they're gonna keep parking there, but.
I got you. I got you.
Uh. So yeah, that is, I, I plan on using my off-street parking there, so.
Very good. Anything else?
Questions? So then the next step, next is that, um, the formal approval will be on the December eleventh agenda.
Okay.
At the time, if they don't, I mean, unless something other questions come up, they can forward them to me.
Okay.
But I don't think it's. Kind of submitted for everyone, the family to come for that meeting and then I'll issue the permit and, uh, we just get by.
Alright, then if anybody has questions, I'm happy to give a full number and happy to talk to anybody about it, so.
Perfect. I didn't receive any other, I didn't receive any questions from adjacent landowners. Formerly to the office, you know, I figured you'd ask yours when you got here.
Yeah.
Alright, well. If there's no further questions, then. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn the public hearing. Thank you. Second.
Your second, I'll check on it. I got it. Yeah.
Next was first.
It was.
All favor.
I.
I. Public hearing is adjourned.
Thanks very much.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys. I really appreciate it.
Your commute was even shorter than mine. I have to walk a little bit, three steps further.
No, it's kind of nice. Very nice to meet you and thanks for the history of the building. I hadn't, uh, hadn't dug that part until yet.
Yeah, that's the second home that was our least.
Okay.
Or my house is the early.
Okay.
From nineteen oh six, so it hasn't moved for a hundred and eighteen years.
So I'm, I'm jealous of the architecture that, looking at it from the outside, it's.
It's nice, yeah. The higher build, it was built by a businesswoman.
Yeah.
So they're for just money.
Very good.
Alright. For that, we will be called to order our regular council work session. Uh, I will dispense with the pledge unless there is someone that, uh, gets. Can I get approval of this evening's agenda?
All approved this evening's agenda.
So, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I. Posed. Evening's agenda is approved. And we'll jump. Right into. Our public informational. Meeting.
Are you assuming it's okay to use the podium?
Absolutely, sir.
Not everybody.
Not only those who are. Well, this mayor, council members, city staff, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about drinking water protection. And the citizens here in Black Duck. Have some excellent drinking water supply. And that's because you have geologic protection that protects your aquifer from which you draw your drinking water. I work for, uh, oh, I'm Chris Person, by the way. I, I already jumped again. Um, I work for the Minnesota Department Health, uh, the Benigni District Office. I served thirteen counties in northeastern Minnesota, north central Minnesota. And I provide technical assistance to community public water suppliers. So wherever you may driving, be driving in that area, if you see a water tower, that's one of mine. Um, at last count, I think it was seventy-eight different communities that I work with. And, uh, Black Duck is one of those. In our program, um, which is the wellhead protection program, there is a wellhead protection rule, uh, part forty-seven twenty. That was passed by the legislature way back in nineteen eighty-eight. And it was a groundwater protection act. And what they wanted to do was bring the EPA's program for community public water suppliers. To the individual states. And so as they considered which state agency should be responsible for that, the department of health came up on their radar. And so they gave responsibility to the department health to implement the EPA's Safe Drinking Water Act. Wellhead protection is a natural offshoot of that. And so back in two thousand and eleven, the city of Black Duck hired a consultant and developed a wellhead protection plan. And, uh, that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight because the plan is effective for ten years. And Minnesota rule says you need to have a plan in place at all times. It's only good for ten years, so we're starting that amendment process now. And, uh. Mike has been kind enough to work with me in all the subtle details of all the requirements. Uh, Minnesota legislature, when they develop forty-seven twenty, they recognize that public participation, and much like your public hearing that you just had. The public needed to have the opportunity to participate, provide comment. And so there's two places in the development of a wellhead protection plan. Where, uh, citizens. Can exercise their right to provide comment. One is at a public information meeting like we're having here tonight. And the other is at the end of the process, after the plan is written and it goes off the sixty-day local government review and comment, then it comes back. And before it's packaged up and sent down to St. Paul to go through the plan approval process, uh, there's a public hearing. So you'll probably be seeing me again. Uh, which I hope will.
So far, so good.
Definitely. Alright. Uh. The, uh. Rule also requires that notification be provided to other local units of government about both the public hearing and the public information. And you can see the letter, uh, that Christina was kind enough to make copies of for you. And, uh, basically it's their notice of saying, here's your opportunity to participate. Take advantage of it because after the process is over. The legislature and department health don't want to hear from citizens about, hey, how come I wasn't involved? Who made that decision without my in? So. Christina also made maps. Okay, you have copies of those? Okay.
Yeah.
This is the amended, uh, drinking water supply management area. And I'll just describe a couple of the details there. You can see the two city wells. Uh, located there and sort of that center of that, uh, red polygon. The red polygon, it was representative of a one-year time of travel. So water within that red polygon will get to the city wells in one year. Conversely, the blue polygon is a ten-year time of travel. And Minnesota rule requires a ten-year time of travel minimum, uh, for hydrologists to do the modeling. So they look at all kinds of different things, including stratigraphy. They look at what we call trans proximity, how quickly water moves through the system. They look at the type of aquifer you have, uh, which is a sand and gravel aquifer about thirty-five feet deep. So you're getting really, really great drinking water from that aquifer. It's difficult for Mike or other staff like myself to even to go out in the field and try to locate that blue polygon. You can just imagine, right? And so Minnesota rule says that you have to completely contain that blue ten-year time of travel. Within that yellow boundary, which is the drinking water supply management area. That boundary has recognizable features on the ground. Parcels, roads, streams. So it's easy. For staff and, well. All kinds of staff to know whether they're in the drinking water supply management area or dwisma as we call it, or outside the dwisma. And that's important as you go managing. Uh, your, your dwisma. So well number five right now is an emergency well. Uh, it was converted that way. Uh, well, number eight is your primary well. They both have, uh, eight-inch casings. Uh, the well depth. Is, uh, for well number five is a hundred and ninety-one feet. Uh, the well depth for your primary well is two hundred and fifteen. So that goes through about a hundred and seventy feet of play. That's why you have that geologic protection. So we don't find any of the contaminants identified in the Safe Drinking Water Act. Uh, in the city's drinking water. That's a, that's a good thing. Um, there's also a couple of other tests that are run that are, uh. Uh, help, um, confirm the results of the chemistry. Uh, regionally groundwater flow is to the northwest. So this dwisma here is slightly larger. Than the dwisma that you currently have in your current plan.
I have a question.
And that's because.
What's a dwisma?
Oh, drinking water supply management.
Oh geez, there's one of those acronyms.
Oh, I threw that.
Sorry.
And, and don't forget WAPA.
Oh, no.
The wellhead protection area is, uh, you'll, you'll come out with lots of new lingo to impress your friends.
Sorry.
WISMA and WAPAs.
Got it.
Yeah, it's kind of fun when the department health staff get around and talk shop.
He's, I.
Okay.
And you can have. Uh, so anyway, this wisdom is slightly larger, probably due to better computer modeling. So twelve years ago. The, how should we say it? The capacity has increased in the past twelve years to do better modeling. And so there's a very stringent process that hydrogeologists have to go through to model that WAPA and the dwisma. Okay? Um, there's also an area around each well. And that's called the emergency response area or ERA.
Yeah.
And that's a two-hundred-foot radius around each well. Those are managed specifically, uh, because of the short time of travel. So there are, um, initiatives in the plan, uh, that Mike and other staff will implement. To maintain isolation distances from certain potential contaminants. Um. Yeah, I could probably touch on that too.
What would, uh, what would a potential contaminant be out there?
Oh, transformers, electrical transformers is a good one. Uh, fuel oil tanks, uh. Storage, uh, chemicals, petroleum byproducts. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that show up.
Okay.
Um. And again, we have to identify those, which is the point I was just gonna make here. Within that inner well management zone, that two-hundred-foot area. We also, within that dwisma now, part of the process of amending your plan is to look for potential contaminants. That could impact the city's drinking water supply, get into your aquifer. And the easiest one is both of your city wells. Because they're a conduit. Straight down into the aquifer. Now, the good news is that both of those meet the, uh, uh, construction standards of the Minnesota well division. And, uh, so they've been constructed to help protect your drinking water supply. So that, that's good news. So the whole key here is when we look for other potential contaminants in that area. Of course, wells are going to be the big ones. And we identified, I believe it was eight different wells. Um, in the previous or in your current plan. And then we include strategies in there to help city staff manage those wells. So for example, if you have a private landowner out there who decides. He wants to hook up the city water or he's gonna drill a new well. Obviously, we work with that landowner and we can provide financial assistance in the form of grants to the city. So that landowner can get their well sealed properly and, and certified, uh. Uh, without any cost to that. So there's other opportunities that we include in there. Uh, Mike and I have talked about the idea of, does the city have a backup generator? What are you gonna do if power goes out? Well, the DNR, because of fire issues and also because of your positive pressure that you want to maintain in your infrastructure. Um, it's strongly encouraged that you have backup power. So that you can, um, operate and keep a positive pressure on your system. Otherwise, you have to send out the boil. Uh, order. If your pressure drops. So then all your citizens have to deal with that. So. It's, it's a good way of, uh, helping protect, again, your, your drinking water supply. I'm just gonna briefly touch on the well vulnerability. So each well has been assessed based on well construction, um, especially by the state well code. Uh, they looked at past monitoring and results. And. Without getting too far into the weeds, we have a process by which we can determine the age of the drinking water in your aquifer. And it's called, um, basically, uh, um, looking for detection of, uh, the, of tritium. Tritium is a hydrogen, uh, atom that has been subjected to radiation. Through the form of, uh, nuclear bombs. And since the nineteen fifties, this has been globally dispersed. It's in every surface water and a lot of groundwater. And it's okay to drink. It's, that's not the issue. I asked her, uh, my hydrologist supervisor down St. Paul, because the question was posed to me and he. I'd been asked the question by a, by a staff person that had a community and he said. I'm concerned about this tritium, you know? How much tritium do I have to drink to cause any potential health consequences? And he said, gee, that's a good question. Never been asked that before. So he ran a bunch of calculations. And he came up and said it would have to drink about eleven hundred gallons per day. In order for that to have any negative health consequences. So tritium is a way of detection. So if we detect tritium in there, we know that water is younger than nineteen fifties.
Yeah.
Okay, so the key is you want old water.
Got it.
Water that's older than the fifties because that doesn't have the characteristics of human impacted, um, contamination. So the good news, you've got old water and it's well protected. Um. However, uh. So your, your vulnerability in your dwisma is low. So we have three levels, low, moderate, and high. And because you're low vulnerability, again, that's good news for the city's drinking water supply. So the principal threats to the aquifer are unsealed abandoned wells that penetrate through that clay confining layer. So we're looking at probably wells that are a hundred and forty feet or greater in depth. And that will be part of that process that Mike and I will be working through with your consultants. And hopefully for some of you folks like, uh, counselor Fredrickson, who sounds like you've lived here a long time. Uh, you could be of benefit with your, um, personal knowledge of the area within the dwisma and help identify potential sites.
Well, I did not live here for forty-six years, so. I started here and I'm finishing here, so.
Oh, I understand.
I came, I was here for the first inning and I'll be here for the ninth inning, so.
Okay. I understand. Well, anyone who does have some information though. Of the community, particularly activities historically within that dwisma. Um, particularly prior to nineteen seventies, thereabouts, because that's when well management came into play. So you needed a permit then to develop and construct a well. Prior to the nineteen seventies, it was a free throw.
Yeah.
You could put a well anywhere you wanted. There was no trace of it, no record of that. And so old homesteads. Um, are a good place to look for unsealed wells. I don't know if they'll be deeper than a hundred and forty feet, but that's something we can determine. So I tend to ramble. Um. You hopefully learned a lot about vernacular of our wellhead protection planning process. Um, are there any questions I could help answer?
It, it's quite interesting, actually. I haven't really given it much thought. And there's, that, that there's a lot more going on than what people think.
Mm-hmm.
You, you said earlier you identified ten wells. Did I catch that correctly? In, in a certain area here or?
I thought it was eight.
Test, test wells?
No, you'd identified ten wells.
Oh, yes. In, in your current plan, I think it was eight, not a statement.
Yep. Boundary is that in on the map?
It would be within the dwisma.
Okay, and that's the yellow.
The entire boundary.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, that's that yellow, yellow line.
Mm-hmm. So you've identified tens before and there may be more?
It's, it, it's possible. Uh, we try to do as thorough a job as, as possible when we inventory, uh, those old wells. Um. And there'll be a blanket statement in there, uh, in the plan that just talks generally about sealing unused wells. So in the event that. Mike comes across one. Um. We can always get that well sealed. So even though they're identified specifically in the. We go again, potential contaminant source inventory, there's another one, a PCSI. Uh. And that's what we.
Fixing.
Yeah. PCSI, potential contaminant source inventory. So. We identify individual locations of, of those wells and those potential contaminants. But again, broadly speaking, you have the ability to use that plan to address or remediate any unsealed unused wells that you might find. So. We try to make as flexible as we can. Again, the whole goal is protection. You know, that's why we're doing this, is to keep contaminants out. Uh, once they're found, then your drinking water supply is too late. And so, um. That's, that's the importance of prevention.
I have one question.
Sure.
On the, uh, figure one, the amended drinking water management area, the yellow line. It's not a complete. Square. The northeast corner is. Cut apart.
Correct.
What's, what's the logic on that?
That goes back to Minnesota rule requirements. When the hydrogeologist develops that dwisma boundary around the WAPA polygon. They're required to use boundaries as close as possible to that WAPA.
Okay.
So those are little cutouts probably for parcels would be up there in that northeast corner that you're talking about?
Yes.
Exactly what it is because prior to this, the old one, um, the northwest boundary was different.
Oh.
When Prem owned that and now that Rudnicki has bought it from Prem.
Yep.
We have now brought what Rudnicki owns in because he also owns the stuff that's back east more.
Certainly.
So it, it obviously follows property lines a bit too.
Okay. It's just, my line of thinking is the northeast quarter. Where, um, Rasmus's house is up there on, on.
Off the field.
Up, is up the field. I know that one isn't connected to the city services and then the other house. Some of them also is not. One that all.
They're outside of the line there.
They are outside the line and that's my, I'm trying to understand the logic of why they would be outside this line. Why would it not be a complete total square?
Again, it goes back to the rural requirements.
Okay, and that's fine.
And hydrogeologists is required to follow that.
Okay.
Yep. And again. And again, the, the whole concept is to manage. The potential contaminants within that wellhead protection area. But again, by doing so, you're working within that Duismah. But it, so. It, it's uh, how should we say? It's finding that sweet spot.
Okay.
So that you can identify where you are, but you're not including parcels that clearly shouldn't be a part of this. Now, this is for a ten-year time travel. So some communities opt for a fifteen-year time of travel or some maybe even twenty. Because they wanna reach out beyond that ten-year time of travel, um.
Is that up to the community?
Yes, the community makes that request at the beginning of the planning process.
It's a benefit to that.
Um, the communities that benefit most are those that are seeing um, expanding populations. Uh, growth in their infrastructure. Uh, increasing water usage. Um, I am a little concerned myself for the city of Amity. Because all their wellfields out there in that airport and that's just a ten-year time of travel, but yet now. I just was reviewing a project that is being proposed to be developed right there by the airport. Again, it's gonna increase water consumption. Uh, it's gonna have stormwater runoff things associated with it. And the Migi, unlike Black Duck, does not have any geologic protection. It's straight sugar sand all the way down. So whatever happens there is gonna infiltrate. And if you've been following the news, you know that the P VAs or P A's.
Yep.
Have been discovered and they built more. A very expensive treatment plant to deal with that. And had they known. Fifty years ago when they were out testing fire retardants on airplanes. Um, what consequences there would be fifty years down the road. So again, we, we can't always foresee the future, but. Um, we can implement prevention. Um, as, as best we can.
So the benefit that I'm hearing is although we complain about how much claim we have. It's the best thing we could have when it comes to our drinking water.
Yes.
So we shouldn't complain about our gravel roads in this.
You got plenty of water to drink.
If all relative.
Yeah, so those are the communities again that would probably benefit most from considering an expansion. Um, I've got a couple of communities up on the Iron Range that I've been working with. And because of loss of population. Their uh, consumption of water uh, is greatly reduced. Um, and uh, water conservation techniques. And so what used to be a ten-year time of travel, now when they model it. That same Duismah is now a fifteen or twenty-year time of travel. And so both communities said is, well, we're used to working within that Duismah. We don't wanna change the Duismah. Staff are already aware of it. We'll just make it a twenty-year time of travel. But sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there, I, I know you said that there was uh, programs to help. Landowners, if they have wells that are in the area. What about wells that are not in the area?
If they're old municipal wells. They don't need to be within the Duismah.
What about old personal wells?
Yeah, that's a different story. Um. We have two types of grants. One is an implementation grant. That would be for those that would be eligible within the Duismah.
But it has to be within. The Duismah.
Yeah, there's a competitive grant process also that covers. Other things. I would have to double check on that. Um, otherwise there are well sealing cost share funds through your local soil and water conservation district. Which is housed in the Environmental Services Office down at the courthouse there. Um, I spent twenty-two years working with uh, the S W C D. So uh, the cost share rates there, I believe, used to be fifty percent. I. Think I heard rumor they were gonna kick that up to seventy-five percent. So the landowner would have to contribute something out of their own pocket. In order to get that well sealed. Whereas program we have, we just pay the whole bill.
I know the clay is impressive. If you've ever dug a basement in this area, it's like virgin clay. It's amazing. And what did you say? There's a hundred and some?
Hundred forty feet.
Hundred and forty feet of that above. He's just taking a basement. It's impressive. Never been disturbed.
Well, during that twenty-two years of service to the county. Um, I also implemented the Wetland Conservation Act. And one of the very first calls that I was sent up a field for is right across the road here. North of what used to be a kitchen or the.
Yeah, the countryside restaurant.
Yes, that was it. And yes, clay has a habit of collecting water and creating wetlands. You can't hardly turn around north of Black Duck without stepping into one.
No.
I'm very, very familiar with that, but you're absolutely right. That's probably one of the best things that the city Black Duck has going for. Terms of drinking water.
Going for it.
Well, I'll conclude, um, not here anymore questions. Uh, Mike's got my contact information. Um.
And we'll be seeing more of you.
Yes, we'll certainly be uh, up here and working with your consultant to develop that part two. Yep. Christina and Mike, do you know, did we ever get you formally transferred over as wellhead protection manager?
I believe so. We'll have to double check though.
Yeah, I was thinking of that driving up here and I, I should have checked.
I, I thought we had, but. We can maybe get together touch base tomorrow and check it out.
Okay. And if we need to, it just requires um, action um, by the council. To designate a new wellhead protection manager. If that has.
I, I think when I took the job, I think that. It was. Uh, maybe not.
Probably done, but I know there was no action.
Yeah, we kind of just put me into everything and yeah, I don't think there was an actual.
Yeah.
Action taken by the council to formally. I guess. It was just known that when I took the position here that I was stepping into everything that the former was stepping out of.
Right.
Okay, and some communities just put it into the job description.
Yep.
So congratulations, here's another hat for you to wear. You're now the wellhead manager. So uh, I know smaller communities really struggle with staffing and resources and uh. I appreciate your commitment to drinking water. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
We'll be in touch.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
On the whole business. Unless you got something else, Mike. On the wellhead.
Not the wellhead.
You're lucky he was here.
No, I'll let you go through old business. I'll bring something up in new business.
Um, we'll work with Mike to get some water testing done and that'll determine what upgrades we can use or implement into the water treatment plant. We just gotta see. What the water is testing on the well side and then after treatment side to make sure that we're. Getting arsenic, ammonia, manganese, and iron and stuff like that out of the water through the treatment process. Or at least to an acceptable level. And if we're not, then we'll have to look at upgrading more to water treatment plants where in the process of getting those tests done.
Does the wellhead stuff under D E R do?
No, it doesn't.
Not, not specifically, no.
Okay. It may, might be mentioned in there that the city has a plan in place, but. Um. No, there'll be nothing. Specifically. If you do have anything else, man, you better run here pretty soon, so. I know Max said he had a dying question.
I did have a question for you, but I, you know, it's sort of the last. If you need to get going, I, I, I would run now.
Yeah.
Yeah. You better get moving. We, we know you're gonna be back. Um, anything else? D E R wise, something? Something else there? Library report?
Um, I don't have anything from our old business from October unless something came out of the last Kichigami and. Board meeting from the library.
And I guess if we've got nothing on the library, we can just go right to the. Co-op, Christina, what, what you got there?
I, you know what? I don't. I'm still waiting for the deed. Um, correction has not come past my desk yet, so I haven't gotten that through. The city attorney yet and I have talked with Rachel from the co-op. Um, in passing, just letting her know I'm still on hold with that, so. In process.
D E R restoration donations. Keep going up.
So yeah, our um. Our donations have met, um, our threshold. I, um. Since last meeting. Let um, Rob Johnson know where we're at for funding. And to keep us on the agenda or his schedule as soon as it gets warm next spring. Um. Very thankful for the um, contributions. Made that very clear at the last chamber meeting to, um. To all of the people that have been donating, um, to the efforts. Um, a lot of questions have come up about what do you do with the access? Um, at this point, I don't have any formal plan. Um, I know that there's, you know. Needs to be some beautification to the corner where the historic duck is. Um, but what I can say is that if, if, if the donations truly exceed the threshold a lot. My recommendation at this point. Given some serious thought about it and where we're at right now is to earmark that for future. Maintenance on the statues. I know that the Migi does that for fallen babe. They actually. Have a small fund that they have set aside. Anybody contributes anything to it, it's from the Northwest Minnesota Foundation. It's solely there to make sure that the existence of the statues. Can have a feature. And I think the people that have been giving private donations to that, knowing that's. What they're giving the money to. Would be, you know, appreciated. Um. You know, outside of doing some, something different with the, with the landscape back in this corner. I don't have any formal plans to do anything more at this point, um, hoping in the off season to. Maybe. Put some ideas together with Mike or a couple other people from our committee. Right. I'm just happy and very humble to see that, you know, the community has come forward with. With the financial support.
And anybody can still donate.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Right up to the, since we will have a fund and this is a city run. We're behind the. Building financing of it.
Yeah.
Good. And greater. Well, someone has something else on the restoration, I'm sorry.
Um, so the grater got delivered, um, shortly after the last meeting, made the payment, um, to give you guys the pictures. Uh, U S D A rep passed, um. All the validation of the payment. Um, and you know, the county released it and brought it up to the guys. Um, and right now I'm just waiting for a couple other um, final pieces. Of paperwork to go to Laura from U S D A and then she'll finalize, finalize her paperwork and probably see a reimbursement next month. I think all of the guys have been able to try it out.
Uh, with the exception of Ray, who's been on vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it out about.
Yeah, it's been out. Couple guys getting used to.
Yeah.
Running a piece of equipment. Makes little difference, you know, the, the controls are a little different than the old one. We've had just kind of one main operator the city has over the last twenty years essentially, so. Do things a little bit different now and get everybody kind of. Trained in good enough to at least operate it and make it move, so. That's where we sit with it and it was a good time year to do it. The roads were just soft enough that. You could play around and if you messed up, you can just fill it right back in. Lot easier than when it's hard as a rock.
Yeah, yeah. There'll be plenty of that, don't worry.
Oh, yeah.
Then what's going on with the old one again?
Uh, it'll be put up for sale. Yep, I had um. An offer on it. I don't know if that offer still stands right now or not. Originally, we thought we would have this. Sooner, uh, I mean, we still got it pretty quickly in the grand scheme of things, but originally we thought we may have it sooner. Um, the person who made that offer, I believe, has since bought another one. Um, but still could possibly be in the market and have actually. Had a couple other people ask some questions about it, so. You gotta reach out and see what the interest is for people still right now. My hope is to get that moved out of here within probably the next month at most. I'd like to see it gone before winter. We definitely don't. Have the room to house two graders, so. Get it out of the way. Move on.
Anything else?
It's nice to have projects like.
Just wrap them up.
Wrap them up. Feels really good to have books closed. Yeah.
Okay, the stage update is we're still sitting there, aren't we? Now with deer season and everything else, jumping in here and.
Holidays and everything is. Maybe after Thanksgiving, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, but that's a.
Yeah, it's pretty big maybe. And it's one of those, well. We're, we're not the only ones on the, on the platter.
Right. That's just the estimate, huh?
Um, yeah, so I got this from Jake Lee in last week, um. The, there are two options here. One is. Uh, the cost to have the security system and one is without. Um, the, regardless of the pricing that I'm presenting to you. One thing that is very important to note is in the middle of the page. Of which I do not see. An immediate need because of this. And it states that the customer needs to have a temperature controlled area for all this equipment. We don't have that down at the wayside. We have a restroom that gets vandalized in the summer. I'm not willing to pay for, or even three, or even two thousand dollars for equipment in a place that isn't secured enough. To keep it safe, that's temperature controlled. That's to me not. A good way to spend the public's money and I just would like to put this in the back pocket for any future. Improvements to the wayside if and when the, like the local sales tax option gets approved or. And we really can have a. And we really can have a nice future plan for a facility that has the restrooms and maybe a better. Tourist information center that can house something like this um. That unfortunately was not even a thought in my brain that it required this much technology. So now I know. You know?
Yep, that we do.
And and from talking to a couple other representatives, Paul Bunyan, that is a very common. You know, observation from a lot of people in the general public. I mean, I feel like I'm pretty tech savvy, but. That's the last thing I thought that this would need is.
Well, you're looking at it and you're going.
We can put a webcam up, yeah. I mean, fantastic idea. I think it would be really great in the future, but it's it's obviously not something. We have immediate capabilities of housing.
Yeah, the the current restroom building, I mean, that doesn't have any heating at all.
No, it it does.
Oh, it does?
It costs us a lot of money to heat that, so we shut it down in the winter.
We shut it, right.
Yeah.
Yes, in the winter, it's basically the plumbing is drained, right?
Yep, it's all. Yeah.
Yeah.
That I this that jumped out at me too. Thankfully, they put it in red, so.
Yeah, yeah, well.
To establish a heat source in there all winter, you know, it definitely increased the cost of this.
Absolutely, and and to be fair, um Jake gave us the the quote with. The laptop and, you know, everything and I was like, holy buckets. And I'm like, can I have the other one? He gave it to me, I'm like. Holy buckets, you know, I mean, it was still a high amount. It still required the heat. And I'm like, yeah, we just. We just don't have the capability of doing this right now.
No.
Maybe maybe sometime in the future, but not right now. So I I'm not giving up on this, though. I think that the concept of it is. You know, a great idea. Um, when I brought it to the chamber, they were like, well. Can we do this or that? And they gave a bunch of other ideas. They didn't know the tourist information booth wasn't heated. Um.
It's not insulated.
It's not even insulated, yeah, so um you know, they're like, well, if we paid for this, would we have, you know, the city be able to do? The heat source and I'm like, no, I'm not putting four thousand dollars worth of equipment in a building that's gonna get. That gets their fixtures in the men's room. Vandalize three times in the summer. It's just, it's not, it's not right. So um, great idea, a little disappointing, but. You know, something to something to strive for.
Good enough for me.
Okay. I'll put it in the in the future to do file and take it up your business.
On to new business.
I really don't have a lot for you guys to discuss tonight except um the annual appointments and designations consideration for point four. I know this has been kind of a conversation and heated point based on the. Previous conversations regarding committee members and um meetings, so I thought it would be wise for. The can the council to at least start having this consideration. This does not get approved until the first meeting in January. So um more can be determined at that meeting, but. This open conversation at a work session is nice to have. Um, I can tell you that I confirmed. With both um Mr. Calvic and Grant Friendsel that they're both willing to still remain on the revolving loan fund committee, so that will continue. Um, as far as I know, the people on the historic preservation committee are still. Uh, um, current and the library board is still current. Am I wrong, Laurie?
Yeah, you're right.
Um.
As far as I know, yes.
Yeah, I mean, unless unless there's a need to shift around um a couple of the committees that do meet. Quite often Gulf Board Personnel, um Public Works Finance. Those are usually the ones throughout a year that get most meetings.
Don, do you want the? You wanna give up the public works maybe?
Yeah, I sense you wait a minute.
Get rid of one. I see you have an open spot on the personnel and they need someone at music.
Well.
It would be nice to see the counselor. In there.
On the personnel committee, yes, um it the ones that you see that are open. Between personnel, um public safety. And I think there was one more. Was um set aside for a Cleo.
Yeah.
And it isn't necessarily have to be a staff or a supervisor in that role. It could be. It could be a combination of as long as you don't have a but an open like meeting violation.
Right.
Um. Correct. So, uh but it isn't necessary to have five people on a board on a committee, four is enough. As well, so it's it's completely open to what this board, this council wishes to see. As representatives.
Five break ties though.
Five does break ties, but most often. Those committees that are four.
Uh huh.
Are three to one votes if there is a need for a forum. Very, very seldom is it too much.
All right, did you highlight the uh Ron and Don for any particular reason?
Um, this was my got from the last. Version, I think, from twenty-three.
There were changes before. This was.
Yes.
This was last year's list.
This this is the most current I have since um. Yeah, since with your, gosh, March, I think was when this was updated. Last. Oh, no, mine is Jay Ron updated since you took over for the ambulance board in June. Yeah.
Well, do we just wanna leave it the same?
You have to appoint a vice mayor. Whether it remains Ron or not, that is the decision this decision of the board.
Who wants it?
I have no problem.
Lori, you wanna be vice mayor?
No.
Well, if you are taking turns like you've done in the past, then you're gonna go down the table or you're gonna. Oh, rock, paper, scissors between Lori and Dawn.
Yeah, I'll take it.
But but yeah, nobody. Thanks, guys. Don't leave me hanging.
I mean, if you guys aren't ready to have this open dialogue tonight, that's fine. This doesn't have to be finalized.
I just don't. You know, it just gets you on the list again.
Not really.
I I don't plan on getting sick or hit by a bus or.
I never know.
It's true.
It uh, no, you're fine, I'm fine.
Okay. Is anyone prepared to give up a different a different um committee space?
Yeah, it's like if if you have too many, now's the time to. Speak up. I mean, if you wanna try to figure out different.
Lori, are you prepared to to swap out your library board with someone else or are you wanting to remain um as liaison and representative?
I am fine with that. Um, personnel committee, you need another person there, you said? It says open here.
But again, that's that that's that's that Cleo spot. It doesn't it. Four people is.
Do you have a set? Do you guys, is this something that happens where it's?
It's a lot.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
Personal committee is probably the most demanding and whoever takes that needs to be able to be here.
Yeah. And I travel.
And and there will be some stuff coming up for the personnel committee that's gonna be.
Yep.
Yeah, next year won't have um.
Quite good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got Ernst sick at such a time on January one that we've already addressed. But in in twenty-five, there was a another one that started.
I I know it, but I'm.
Just kinda I on that. I'd be on first balcony and just kind of get into a roll on it, you know, after the end.
Alright.
Um. I was. Telling Christine about that, you know. After any group or whatever, you kind of get. Feeling how everybody else is feeling. I I mean, if somebody else wants it, they can have it, I mean.
What I would suggest. Don is that that's where your passion and your and your leading to is to keep the personnel in the Gulf Board and give up. One of the other two.
That's that's fine.
And ask and ask another council member to step in your in those roles in like public works and liquor.
Yeah, I can pop on the public works one if you don't want that one or something. I think I'm already on the public safety one, so.
If you want to take that, that's fine. I mean, we don't have that many meetings.
No, but it is just one more that will get added like you've experienced this year.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've had.
But two two.
Words ones are minimal.
Yeah, we've had two.
Mike laws.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's gotta be one every once a month. No, you're quarterly, aren't you?
Yeah, buy buy annually.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If that helps, it it might help, it might not.
Somebody wants to.
So this the notes that I've made so far, um moving Dawn into Vice Mayor for twenty-four. Um. Moving Max into Public Works replacing Dawn. And Lori staying on library. I don't have any other changes unless. I'm listening. Is that an okay balance for everyone?
Yeah, for me.
Yeah.
Cause there won't be a work session in December, so um. I'll put this on the. I'll put it as drafted for the January meeting and if something else comes up that evening. Where something needs to change, then we can change it, make changes and then amend the documents. But only the first page gets signed anyway.
You know, with the lack of other people being here this evening, you know. Uh, I guess I have nothing else.
Mike, did you say something earlier that you might have some new business that I?
Uh, just something kind of quick here. I don't have the um the exact numbers on it. Um, however, the and I really don't officially have this yet either. But after talking with um the guys. That did the water tower, it's looking like we definitely need to really think about an exterior and an interior paint job. Pretty soon. Um, I should have their report here shortly. Um, off the cuff, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Half the price inside and half the price outside. What's that?
That was for him and I'll.
Yeah, yep, yep. Yeah, just the, you know, the water tower is a little over twenty years old at this point. The lifespan is, you know, somewhere fifteen to seventeen years from what they tell me and what my research is. So we've, you know, we've gotten the money worth out of the the paint that was on it. However, it is starting to break down. It's leaking off. And you know, it's starting to rust in those areas. We need to start thinking about that pretty soon here, otherwise, I mean, the last thing anybody wants is a catastrophic failure. We're we're a ways from that yet, but.
And I'm not positive. In saying this, but if it gets to that level of cost, it might require a public bid.
Uh, it's.
Seventy-five and up, I think.
It uh I think it's one twenty something and up, but. It would depend because it's not going to be done as one project. It would be done as two projects and inside and then outside. They can't do it all at the same time, it is.
That's but in the same year?
No, it would be done in the same year. But it would be something that. You know, we would definitely look at multiple contractors.
Yeah.
At that point.
Yeah.
You know, whether we do it on a a bid or not. You know, but I'll just put it out there, the 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 shit of low bid wins. Doesn't work that great and I have firsthand knowledge over the last two years and I will flight that to the net.
We can do quotes, though.
Right, right.
Just as important.
Yep, absolutely.
You can still pick.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's just something I wanted everybody, you know, to have on your radar. I should hopefully have kind of the. The full report here shortly and we can touch on that maybe at the next council meeting or something if, I mean, I should definitely have it by then. Just to give you a little better idea, but it's just something I wanted you guys to at least be aware of.
How long would it be out of service for the inside painting?
You know, I'm not one hundred percent sure on that, um.
We pump directly into the main during.
To what's that?
We pump directly into the main during.
Yeah, we would do just like we did when we had it inspected.
Yeah, only inspection was like one day and.
Right, this is gonna be.
Right.
You know, it probably. You know, they've got that down to such a science now. I'm sure they have it shortened up a lot more than we think, you know, is possible. I'm guessing it'd probably be a three day deal or so on the inside. And the outside. You know, I guess I don't know. I would tend to think that they would probably want it drained for the outside too. Because of the condensation, you know. You the cool evenings or you get the cold water going in there and the hot weather outside. You go over there in the summertime, you stand under there and you're gonna get rained on essentially. So I would imagine that even for the exterior paint jobs, they're probably gonna want it drained. So it could be a week that we're pumping around the tower. However, long it is. Kind of is what it is. Doesn't really matter when it has to be done.
Also start looking at funding options.
Yeah.
Um. Since he has opened that panel where he's, I'll just let the council know I'm putting together. A full report for the exterior and downstairs of this building. Um, you know that I've been cherry picking, fixing the roof, updating electrical. Improving the heat source and now I've got another contractor um providing a solution. And now I've got another contractor, um, providing a solution to the water intrusion. From both the west and the north wall downstairs, so. I hope to have that report for the councils review shortly, so you have a better idea of what the total. Cost to keep this building up. Um, and approve on will be, um, maybe by January.
Good. Oh, yeah. Street lights.
Yes, sir.
Third. I have received a complaint that the light on third and summit was out. I drove up there and it was working. I didn't know if maybe you guys had replaced it or not.
We haven't, and third and summit is not our light. That light would belong to, uh, Bill Trammy Electric. But it's getting to be the time of year actually right now that I usually, well, I usually come in either really early. Or I stay, you know, after something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I go and take an hour and. Drive up and down every street and mark them and figure out which ones are mine and which ones are theirs and send a list to them.
And so when you send a list to.
Yeah.
Both family.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put it together and see which ones are all out.
Because, you know, I know how long that pole was down. On on third street, there was Beltrami's pole.
Yeah. That was what, two years?
Two years, yeah.
Usually, usually in the fall and in the spring. No, not that one.
That would rot it off.
Oh, my mistake.
Yeah, it's usually in the spring and in the fall, I'll take, you know.
I'm just conveying the message that.
Yep.
I get to take in the information.
So future future reference for you, because a lot of people think that every street light in town is ours.
Yeah.
Um, we actually, Bill Trammy Electric owns the lion's share of the lights in town. So we own. Three up Oscar. Uh, we own the ones on Liberty, on Fourth Street Northeast. Then we own. This block right here on Main, the north first block from Summit. South block from Summit. We own from. Here to seventy one and then we own from here to. First Street. And then we own down First Street. And then we own a block back on Railroad. And we own the three that are bad on the front of your.
When you get down around my neck of the woods.
That'd be all Beltrami Electric.
It's all Beltrami Electric.
Yep, yep, that's all them, no, not that. And most of, most of your.
Is that Beltrami Electric?
I think those were their lights.
Most of your residential areas in town are Beltrami Electric. We essentially own.
I thought it was like, yeah, or doing wood, if it's a wooden pole, it's theirs.
Yeah, for the most part, yep, for the most part, that is what it was. We also own. Um, the seventy one, seventy two intersection over there, even though they're on the state highway.
Those are ours.
Somehow those are ours, same with, uh, Main Street onto seventy two there. Those are ours. Um. Down by what we call the Forest Relief Station down there.
Yep.
Those are ours. And somehow, I I really have no clue how this works, because it's completely outside the city lines. You run up North Main all the way to where it comes back out onto, uh, seventy two up there.
Yeah, the intersection right there.
That one is somehow ours. Don't know how, but that one's ours. So, yeah, those are the street lights, like you said, the lion's share belongs to Beltrami Electric.
Just wanna refresh everyone's memories. Yeah, then they we're built, we're built for those, we pay for them.
Yes.
We paid for the electricity, however, they maintain the lights.
Yep.
The fessers are there.
No.
So right now, we're, we should be saving some money.
Well, a lot of the ones that, it's a base E and that's it, it's a flat rate, because they're not metered.
Well, and the other thing, it's it's actually kinda nice as they go out. Because they are replacing them now with LEDs, so. So actually, when I see them out nowadays, I'm kinda like, okay, good, glad that one's out. Now we can get another LED one. Because in the long run, it saves us money and honestly, the lighting is better from those LEDs, so.
And daylight savings time has only been on for two weeks, so everybody's just noticing it now.
Pretty much, people are actually.
Otherwise, last month, no one would ever know which ones are out.
It's coming along, though.
No problem.
Uh, please remember that's a truth and taxation. Uh, hearing is, um, the December eleventh meeting. And the approval for the levy on, um, for twenty four is also that evening, so I think this is. And then since requested.
That's a twelve.
You make sure you're here. Make sure you're here. Thank you.
Alright, with that. All favor.
Hi.
Hi. We are adjourned, thanks, guys.